California Commercial Driver's Handbook. Section 9, Hazardous Materials. This section covers: 9.1, Intent of the Regulations; 9.2, Hazardous Materials Transportation: Who Does What? 9.3, Communication Rules; 9.4, Loading and Unloading; 9.5, Bulk, Packaging, Marking, Loading, and Unloading. Again, bulk packaging, marking, loading, and unloading. 9.6, Hazardous Materials: Driving and Parking Rules; 9.7, Hazardous Materials: Emergencies; 9.8, Hazardous Materials: Glossary. This section is designed to assist you in understanding your role and responsibilities in hauling hazmat. Hazmat are products that pose a risk to health, safety, and property during transportation. The term often is shortened to hazmat, which you may see on road signs or to HM in government regulations. Hazmat includes explosives, various types of gas solids, flammable and combustible liquid, and other materials. Because of the risks involved and the potential consequences these risks impose, all levels of government regulate the handling of hazmat. Note: To ensure public safety, DMV examiners will not conduct commercial skills tests in vehicles displaying vehicle placards per CVC 27903. This includes vehicles carrying hazmat and/or wastes and vehicles which have not been purged of their hazardous cargo. CVC 15278A subsection 4 requires an H endorsement for those who drive a vehicle requiring placards. Your CDL tests will be based on your knowledge of federal transportation requirements. Text preceded by "California" refers to state, as in non-federal, requirements which also apply when driving in California. The state requirements are strictly enforced. The Hazardous Materials Regulations (HMR) and common references are found in CFR or Code of Federal Regulations Title 49, Parts 171 through 180. The Hazardous Materials Table in the Regulations contains a list of these items. However, this list is not all-inclusive. Whether or not a material is considered hazardous is based on its characteristics and the shipper's decision on whether or not the material meets a definition of a hazmat in the Regulations. Due to the constantly changing nature of government regulations, it is impossible to guarantee absolute accuracy of the materials in this section. It is essential for you to have an up-to-date copy of the complete Regulations. Included in these Regulations is a complete glossary of terms. The Regulations require vehicles transporting certain types or quantities of hazmat to display diamond-shaped square-on-point warning signs called placards. You must have a CDL with an H endorsement before you drive any size vehicle that is used to transport hazmat as defined in CFR Title 49, 383.5. You must pass a knowledge test about the Regulations and requirements to get this endorsement. Note: A CLP holder is prohibited from transporting hazmat. Everything you need to know to pass the knowledge test is in this section. However, this is only the beginning. Most drivers need to know much more on the job. You can learn more by reading and understanding the federal and state rules applicable to hazmat as well as attending hazmat training courses. Your employer, colleges, universities, and various associations usually offer these courses. You can get copies of the federal Regulations CFR Title 49 through your local government printing office bookstore and various industry publishers. Union or company offices often have copies of the rules for driver use. Find out where you can get your own copy to use on the job. The Regulations require training and testing for all drivers involved in transporting hazmat. Your employer or a designated representative is required to provide this training and testing. Hazmat employers are required to keep a record of training for each employee as long as that employee is working with hazmat and for 90 days thereafter. The Regulations require that hazmat employees be trained and tested at least once every three years. All drivers must be trained in the security risks of hazmat transportation. This training must include how to recognize and respond to possible security threats. The Regulations also require that drivers have special training before driving a vehicle transporting certain flammable gas materials or highway route-controlled quantities of radioactive materials. In addition, drivers transporting cargo tanks and portable tanks must receive specialized training. Each driver's employer or their designated representative must provide such training. Some locations require permits to transport certain explosives or bulk hazardous wastes. States and counties may also may require drivers to follow special hazmat routes. The federal government may require permits or exemptions for special hazmat cargo such as rocket fuel. Find out about permits, exemptions, and special routes for the places you drive. Permits. A permit or route restriction may be required to transport some classifications and quantities of hazmat. Contact CHP, California Highway Patrol, and DOT, Department of Transportation, for information. Permits and registrations may also be required for hazardous and medical waste transportation. Contact the Department of Toxic Substances Control and the Department of Health Services respectively for information. If you apply for an original or renew an H endorsement, you must undergo a TSA federal security threat assessment or background records check. You start the TSA background records check after you apply for your CDL at DMV. Successfully complete all appropriate knowledge tests and submit a valid medical form. You must submit fingerprints, a fee, and any additional information required to one of the TSA's designated agents. You must also provide the TSA agent with a copy of your CDL permit and one of the following ID documents: First, a California driver's license or ID card. Second, an out-of-state driver's license. Third, your CLP accompanied by a DMV photo receipt. For a list of TSA agent sites, visit universalenroll.dhs.gov or call 1-855-347-8371. California Hazardous Materials Transportation License. Every motor carrier who transports the following hazmat in California must have a hazardous materials transportation license issued by CHP per CVC 32,000.5. First bullet point: Hazmat shipments unless specifically accepted for which the display of placards is required per CVC 27,903. Next bullet point: Hazmat shipments in excess of 500 pounds transported for a fee which would require placarding if shipped in greater amounts in the same manner. A valid legible copy of the carrier's hazmat transportation license must be carried in the vehicle and be presented to any peace officer or duly authorized employee of CHP upon request. CCR Title 13, 1160.3 subsection G, subsection 2. This is in addition to the federal hazmat registration that may be required under CFR Title 49, 107.601. 9.1, Intent of the Regulations. 9.1.1, Contain the Material. Transporting hazmat can be risky. The Regulations are intended to protect you, those around you, and the environment. They tell shippers how to package the materials safely and drivers how to load, transport, and unload the material. These are called containment rules. 9.1.2, Communicate the Risk. Shippers must warn drivers and others about the material's hazards to communicate the risk. The Regulations require shippers to put hazard warning labels on packages, provide proper shipping papers, emergency response information, and placards. These steps communicate the hazard to the shipper, carrier, and driver. 9.1.3, Assure Safe Drivers and Equipment. You must pass a knowledge test about transporting hazmat to get an H endorsement on a CDL, or in my case, an X, for hazmat and tankers. To pass the test, you must know how to: First bullet point: Identify what is hazmat. Next: Safely load shipments. Next: Properly placard your vehicle in accordance with the rules. And finally: Safely transport shipments. Learn the rules and follow them. Following the rules reduces the risk of injury from hazmat. Taking shortcuts by breaking rules is unsafe. Noncompliance with Regulations can result in fines and jail. Inspect your vehicle before and during each trip. Law enforcement officers may stop and inspect your vehicle. When stopped, they may check your shipping papers, vehicle placards, CDL, H endorsement, and your knowledge of hazmat. 9.2, Hazardous Materials Transportation: Who Does What? 9.2.1, The Shipper. The shipper sends products from one place to another by truck, trail, or excuse me, truck, rail, vessel, or airplane. The shipper uses the hazmat regulations to determine the product's ID number, the product's proper shipping name, to determine the product's hazard class, its packing group, its correct packaging, its correct label and markings, and its correct placards. The shipper must package, mark, and label the materials, prepare shipping papers, provide emergency response information, and supply placards. The shipper must certify on the shipping paper that the shipment has been prepared according to the rules unless you are pulling cargo tanks supplied by you or your employer. 9.2.2, The Carrier. The carrier takes the shipment from the shipper to its destination. The carrier, or rather, prior to transportation, the carrier checks that the shipper correctly described, marked, labeled, and otherwise prepared the shipment for transportation. The carrier refuses improper shipments. 9.2.3, The Driver. The driver makes sure the shipper identified, marked, and labeled the hazmat properly. The driver refuses leaking packages and shipments. The driver placards the vehicle when loading if required. The driver safely transports the shipment without delay. The driver follows all special rules about transporting hazmat. The driver keeps hazmat shipping papers and emergency response information in the proper place. The driver reports accidents and incidents involving hazmat to the proper government agency when the accident/incident occurs while the driver is in physical control of the shipment. 9.3, Communication Rules. 9.3.1, Definitions. Some words and phrases have special meanings when talking about hazmat. Some of these may differ from meanings that you are used to. The words and phrases in this section may be on your test. The meanings of other important words are in the glossary at the end of Section 9. A material's hazard class reflects the risks associated with it. There are nine different hazard classes. The types of materials included in these nine classes are in Figure 9.1. A shipping paper, and I'm going to read 9.1 actually. I'll take a picture of it as well. Figure 9.1, Hazardous Materials Class. There are four columns: Class, Division, name of class or division, and then examples. Starting with Class 1. Division 1.1, name of class is mass explosion. Name of class or division is mass explosion. Examples would be dynamite. Division 1.2 is projection hazard. An example is flares. Division 1.3 is fire hazard. Examples, or an example would be display fireworks. Division 1.4 is minor explosion. An example is ammunition. Division 1.5, name of class is very insensitive. An example would be blasting agents. Division 1.6 is extremely insensitive. An example would be explosive devices. Class 2, falling under Class 2 now. Division 2.1, flammable gases. And it's hard to tell the way this is set up. There's three classes or divisions, but four examples. So I believe the first example being propane falls under flammable gases. Helium might as well, I'm not sure. Class 2, Division 2.2 is non-flammable gases. Again, 2.1 was flammable gases with propane and possibly helium. Division, Class 2, Division 2.2, name of class or division is non-flammable gases, and it could be helium and fluorine, I'm not sure. Class 2, Division 2.3, poisonous toxic gases. Could be fluorine and then compressed. I'll take a picture of it. You'll see what I mean when you look at the picture, that it's kind of hard to tell what line goes with what line. Moving on, Class 3, there is no division. Name of class or division is flammable liquids, and example is gasoline. Class 4, Division 4.1, name of class or division, flammable solids such as ammonium. Under Class 4, 4.2 is spontaneously combustible. An example is pick rate, wetted pick rate. Division, Class 4, Division 4.3, name of class or division is dangerous when wet. And I'm not sure if white phosphorus falls under spontaneously combustible or under dangerous when wet. But another certain example is sodium. An example of dangerous when wet is sodium. So there, let's see. The name of class or division, flammable solids. Ammonium. Ammonium pick rate. Spontaneously combustible. Wetted white phosphorus, possibly. And then finally, dangerous when wet, sodium. I'm going to read that one more time. Class 4, 4.1, Division 4.1, name of class or division, flammable solids, probably ammonium pick rate. Then, Division 4.2, spontaneously combustible, and I believe it's wetted white phosphorus. And finally, Division 4.3, dangerous when wet. And I believe sodium falls under that category. Moving on, Class 5, 5.1, oxidizers, ammonium nitrate. Boy, they don't make this easy. 5.1 oxidizers, ammonium nitrate, I believe. Under 5.2, organic peroxides, methyl, ethyl, ketone, and peroxide. I don't know if peroxide is a continuation of methyl, ethyl, ketone, or if it's in its own category, or its own name. So again, 5.1 oxidizers, ammonium nitrate. 5.2, organic peroxides, I believe that's methyl, ethyl, ketone, and peroxide. Class 6, 6.1, poison, toxic material. Potassium cyanide. And then Division 6.2, infectious substances such as the anthrax virus. Class 7, there is no division. The name or class, name of class or division is radioactive. An example is uranium. Class 8, there is no division. Name of class or division is corrosives. An example is battery fluid. Class 9, there is no division. Name of class or division is miscellaneous hazmat. An example would be polychlorinated biphenols, PCB. In the next box, there is no class. There is no division, class says none. Division is a line through it. Name of class or division is ORM-D, Other Regulated Material-Domestic. An example is food flavorings and medicines. And then in the final, in the final section, in the final line, there is no class. Division has a line through it. Name of class or division is combustible liquids. Examples, an example is fuel oil. So going back to where I left off on the reading. A material's hazard class reflects the risks associated with it. There are nine different hazard classes. The types of materials included in these nine classes are in Figure 9.1. And I just read all of nine, the chart for 9.1, Figure 9.1. A shipping paper describes the hazmat being transported. Shipping orders, bills of lading, and manifests are all shipping papers. Figure 9.6 shows an example of a shipping paper. After an accident or hazmat spill or leak, you may be injured and unable to communicate the hazards of the materials you are transporting. Firefighters and police can prevent or reduce the amount of damage or injury at the scene if they know what hazmat is being carried. Your life and the lives of others may depend on quickly locating the hazmat shipping papers. For that reason, the rules require: First bullet point: Shippers to describe hazmat correctly and include an emergency response telephone number on shipping papers. Second bullet point: Carriers and drivers to quickly identify hazmat shipping papers or keep them on top of other shipping papers and keep the required emergency response information with the shipping papers. Third bullet point: Drivers to keep hazmat shipping papers in or on a pouch on the driver's door in clear view within immediate reach while the seatbelt is fastened while driving. And finally, the driver's seat when out of the vehicle. 9.3.2, Package Labels. Shippers put diamond-shaped hazard warning labels on most hazmat packages. These labels inform others of the hazard. If the diamond label will not fit on the package, shippers may put the label on a tag securely attached to the package. For example, compressed gas cylinders that will not hold a label will have tags or decals. Figure 9.2 shows examples of labels. 9.3.3, Lists of Regulated Products. Placards. Placards are used to warn others of hazmat. Placards are signs put on the outside of a vehicle and on bulk packages which identify the hazard class of the cargo. And that would be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, or none. A placarded vehicle must have at least four identical placards, identical placards. They are put on the front, rear, and both sides of the vehicle, see Figure 9.3. Placards must be readable from all four directions. They are at least 9.84 inches, 9.84 inches, or 250 millimeters square, square-on-point in a diamond shape. Cargo tanks and other bulk packaging display the ID number of their contents on placards or orange panels or white square-on-point displays that are the same size as placards. ID numbers are a four-digit code used by first responders to identify hazmat. An ID number may be used to identify more than one chemical. The letters "NA" in quotes or "UN" in quotes will precede the ID number. The U.S. Department of Transportation Emergency Response Guidebook, ERG, lists the chemicals and the ID numbers assigned to them. There are three main lists used by shippers, carriers, and drivers when trying to identify hazmat. Before transporting a material, look for its name on three lists. Some materials are on all lists, others... Some materials are on all lists, others on only one. Always check the following lists. CFR, the first is CFR. Title forty nine, one hundred and seventy two point one zero one hazardous materials table. Next is appendix A to CFR. Title forty nine, one hundred and seventy two point one zero one. List of hazardous substances and reportable quantities. Finally is appendix B to CFR, title forty nine, one seventy two point one zero one, list of marine pollutants. Hazardous materials table. Table nine point four shows part of the hazardous materials table. Column one tells which shipping modes, mode or modes, the entry effects and other information concerning the shipping description. The next five columns show each material's shipping name, hazard class or division, ID number, packaging group and required labels, I'll read that again. The next five columns show each material's shipping name, hazard class or division, ID number, packaging group and required labels. Column one. Six different symbols may appear in column one on the table. The first symbol is a plus. Shows the proper shipping name, hazard class and packing group to use. Even if the material does not meet the hazard class definition. Next is a capital letter A. Means that hazmat described in column two is subject to HMR only when offered or intended for transport by air unless it is a hazardous substance or waste. The next symbol is a W. This means that the hazard, the hazmat described in column two is subject to HMR only when offered or intended for transportation by water unless it is a hazardous substance, waste or marine pollutant. The next symbol is D like David. Means, this means the proper shipping name is appropriate for describing materials for domestic transportation, but may not be proper for international transportation. The next symbol is I. Identifies a major shipping name that is used to describe materials in international transportation. A different shipping name may be used when only domestic transportation is involved. The next is the letter G like George. This means the hazmat described in column two is a generic shipping name. A generic shipping name must be accompanied by a technical name on the shipping paper. A technical name is a specific chemical that makes the product hazardous. I have a table here CFR. Title forty nine, one hundred and seventy two point one zero one hazardous materials table symbols. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There are eight general categories, but ten columns, the first column is symbols. The next column is hazmat description and proper shipping names. The next column is hazard class or division. The next column is identification numbers. The next column is PG like PG rated. The next column is label codes. The next column is special provisions. And the final column is packaging. One seventy three asterisk asterisk asterisk. And under that heading of packaging falls three columns, the first is exceptions, the second is non bulk and the final one, the last one is bulk. Column two. Where was I? I was on column one. Column one, six different symbols may appear in column one on the table. Moving on to column two. This lists the proper shipping names and descriptions of regulated materials. Entries are in alphabetical order so you can quickly find the right entry. The table shows proper shipping names in regular type. The shipping paper must show proper shipping names. Names shown in italics are not proper shipping names. That was column two, now column three. Shows a materials hazard class or division or the entry forbidden in quotes, forbidden. Never transport a forbidden material. Placard, forbidden material. Placard hazmat shipments are based on the quantity and hazard class. You can decide which placards to use if you know these three things. The first is material, the materials hazard class. The next one is amount being shipped. And finally, amount of all hazmat of all classes on your vehicle. Again, you can decide which placards to use if you know these three things. The first is the materials hazard class. The second item is the amount being shipped. And the final item is amount of all hazmat of all classes on your vehicle. Column four. Lists the ID number for each proper shipping name, lists the ID number for each proper shipping name. ID numbers are preceded by the letters UN or NA or ID. Uniform November or November Alpha or India Delta. UN NA ID. The letters NA are associated with proper shipping names that are only used within the U S and to and from Canada. The letters ID are associated with proper shipping names recognized by the International Civil Aviation Organization, the IACO. Technical instructions for transportation by air. The ID number must appear on the shipping paper as part of the shipping description and also appear on the package. It also must appear on cargo tanks and other bulk packaging. Police and firefighters use this number to quickly identify the hazmat. Column five shows the packing group in Roman numerals assigned to a material. Column five shows the packing group in Roman numerals assigned to a material. Column six shows the hazard warning labels. Shippers must put on packages of hazmat. Some products require use of more than one label due to multiple hazards being present. That's column six. Column seven lists the additional special provisions that apply to this material. When there is an entry in this column, you must refer to the CFR for specific information. The numbers one through six in the column mean the hazmat is a poison inhalation hazard. Again, the numbers one through six in this column mean the hazmat is a poison inhalation hazard. Poison inhalation hazard materials have special requirements for shipping papers, marking and placards. That was column seven. Column eight is a three part column showing the section numbers covering the packaging requirements for each hazmat. Note. Columns nine and ten do not apply to transportation by highway. Appendix A to CFR title forty nine, one hundred and seventy two point one zero one. List of hazardous substances and reportable quantities. The Department of Transportation and the EPA Environment, Environmental Protection Agency want to know about spills of hazardous substances. They are named in the list of hazardous substances and reportable quantities. See figure nine point five, column three of the list. See figure nine point five, see figure nine point five. Column three of the list shows each product's reportable quantity, RQ. That was, that was it. Column three of the list shows each product's reportable quantity or RQ. When these materials are being transported in an RQ or greater or greater in one package, the shipper displays the letters RQ on the shipping paper and package. The shipper displays the letters RQ on the shipping paper and package. The letters RQ may appear before or after the basic description. You or your employer may report any spills of these materials which occur in an RQ. Appendix A to forty nine CFR, one hundred and seventy two point one zero one. List of hazardous substances and reportable quantities and it's figure nine point five. Hazardous substances. Phenol. I can't even see this. Phenol. Mercaptan, M E R C A P T A N. Phenol mercaptan, reportable quantity, RQ in pounds and kilograms, one hundred pounds, forty five point four kilograms. Next is phenol mercury acetate, one hundred pounds or forty five point four kilograms. Next is phenothiazepine, one hundred pounds, forty five point four kilograms. Next hazardous substance is four eight, ten pounds or four point five four kilograms. Next is phosgene. Reportable quantity is ten pounds, four point five four kilograms. Next is phosphine. One hundred pounds or forty five point four kilograms. Next is phosphoric acid, five thousand pounds or two thousand two hundred and seventy kilograms. Next is phosphoric acid. Diethyl four dash nitrophenyl ester, one hundred pounds or forty five point four kilograms. Next is phosphoric acid, lead plus two salt. Two point three salt, ten pounds or this can't be right. Four point five four kilograms, I believe. I believe it's wrong in the book. If the words inhalation hazard appear on the shipping paper or package, the rules require display of the poison inhalation hazard or poison gas placards as appropriate. These placards must be used in addition to other placards which may be required by the product's hazard class. Always display the hazard class and poison inhalation hazard placards even for small amounts. Appendix B to CFR title forty nine, one hundred and seventy two point one zero one. List of marine pollutants. Appendix B is a list of chemicals that are toxic to marine life. For highway transportation, this list is only used for chemicals in a container and are in a container with a capacity of one hundred and nineteen gallons or more without a placard or label as specified by HMB. I'm gonna read that again. For highway transportation, this list is only used for chemicals in a container with a capacity of one hundred and nineteen gallons or more without a placard or label as specified by HMR. Any bulk packages of a marine pollutant must display the marine pollutant marking, which is a white triangle with a fish and an X through the fish. This marking, it is not a placard, must also be displayed on the outside of the vehicle. In addition, a notation must be made on the shipping papers near the description of the material. Marine pollutant, I'm gonna read that again, in addition, a notation must be made on the shipping papers near the description of the material. And the notation is marine pollutant. Nine point three point four, shipping paper. The shipping paper shown in figure nine point six describes a shipment. A shipping paper for hazmat must include first, page numbers if the shipping paper has more than one page. The first page must tell the total number of pages, for example, page one of four. Second, or next, a proper shipping description for each hazmat. And finally, a shipper's certification signed by the shipper saying they prepared the shipment according to HMR or hazardous material regulations. Nine point three point five, item description. If a shipping paper describes both hazardous and non hazardous products, the hazmat must be entered first, highlighted in a contrasting color or identified by an X as an X ray placed before the shipping description. ID number, shipping name, hazard class, packing group in a column titled HM. The letters RQ for reportable quantity may be used instead of X if a reportable quantity needs to be identified. The basic description of hazmat includes the ID number, proper shipping name, hazard class or division, hazard class or division, and packing group, if any, in that order. The packing group is displayed in Roman numerals and may be preceded by PG. I'm gonna read that again. Section nine point three point five. Item description. If a shipping paper describes both hazardous and non hazardous products, the hazmat must be entered first, highlighted in a contrasting color or identified by an X placed before the shipping description. ID number, shipping name, hazard class, packing group in a column titled HM. The letters RQ may be used instead of X if a reportable quantity needs to be identified. The basic description of hazmat includes the ID number, proper shipping name, hazard class or division and packing group, if any, in that order. The packing group is displayed in Roman numerals and may be preceded by PG. And figure nine point six is an example of a shipping paper. The ID number, shipping name and hazard class must not be abbreviated unless specifically authorized in HMR. The description must also show, first bullet point, the total quantity and unit of measure. Second, the number and type of packages, example, six drums. Third, the letters RQ if a reportable quantity. Fourth bullet point, if the letters RQ appear, the name of the hazardous substance if not included in the shipping papers. Again, if the letters RQ appear, then the name of the hazardous substance if it's not already included in the shipping papers. Finally, number five, for all materials with the letter G, generic, in column one, the technical name of the hazmat must be included. Shipping papers also must list an emergency response telephone number unless accepted. The emergency response telephone number is the responsibility of the shipper. It can be used by emergency responders to obtain information about any hazmat involved in a spill or fire. in a spill or fire. The telephone number must be the number of the person, first, the number of the person offering the hazmat for transportation, if the shipper slash offerer is the emergency response information provider. ERI provider. Or the number, the phone number of an, of an agency or organization capable of and accepting responsibility for providing the detailed information required. The person who is registered with the ERI provider must be identified on the shipping paper by name, contract number, or other unique identifier assigned by the ERI provider. Shippers also must provide emergency response information to the motor carrier for each hazmat being shipped. The emergency response information must be able to be used away from the motor vehicle and provide information on how to safely handle incidents involving the material. At a minimum, it must include the following information. First, the basic description and technical name. Second, immediate hazards to health. Next, risks of fire or explosion. Next, immediate precautions to be taken in the event of an accident or incident. Next, immediate methods for handling fires. Next, initial methods for handling spills or leaks in the absence of fires. And finally, preliminary first aid measures. Such information can be on the shipping paper or some other document that includes the basic description and technical name of the hazmat. It also may be in a guidance book such as the Emergency Response Guidebook ERG. Motor carriers may assist shippers by keeping an ERG on each vehicle carrying hazmat. The driver must provide the emergency response information to any federal, state, or local authority responding to or investigating a hazmat incident. Total quantity, number, and type of packages must appear before or after the basic description. The packaging type and the unit of measurement may be abbreviated. For example, ten CTNS for ten cartons. Uh, ten cartons, comma, UN one-two-six-three, comma, paint, comma, three, comma, PG Roman numeral, numeral two, comma, five hundred pounds. The shipper of hazardous wastes must put the word waste before the proper shipping name of the material on the shipping paper, hazardous waste manifest. For example, UN ten ninety, comma, waste acetone, comma, three, comma, PG Roman numeral two. A non-hazardous material may not be described by using a hazard class or ID number. Shippers must keep a copy of shipping papers or an electronic image for a period of two years, or three years for hazardous waste, after the material is accepted by the initial carrier. If a shipper provides a carrier service only and is not the originator of the shipment, a carrier is required to keep a copy of the shipping paper or an electronic image for a period of one year. Important, to view complete regulatory requirements for the transportation of hazmat, refer to CFR title forty-nine, parts one hundred and seventy-one through one hundred and eighty. Nine point three point six, shipper's certification. When the shipper packages hazmat, they certify that the package has been prepared according to HMR. The signed shipper's certification appears on the original shipping paper. The only exceptions are when a shipper is a private carrier transporting their own product and when the package is provided by the carrier, for example, a cargo tank. Unless a package is clearly unsafe or does not comply with HMR, you may accept the shipper's certification concerning proper packaging, concerning proper packaging. Some carriers have additional rules about transporting hazmat. Follow your employer's rules when accepting shipments. Nine point three point seven, package markings and labels. Shippers print required markings directly on the package and attached label or tag. I'm, I'm gonna read that again. Shippers print required markings directly on the package and attached label or tag. An important package marking is the name of the hazmat. It is the same name as the one on the shipping paper. The requirements for marking vary by package size and material being transported. When required, the shipper will put the following on the package. First, the name and address of shipper or consignee. Next, the hazmat shipping name and ID number. Finally, the labels required. It is a good idea it is a good idea to compare the shipping paper to the markings and labels. Always make sure that the shipper shows the correct basic description on the shipping paper and verifies that the proper labels are shown on the packages. If you are not familiar with the material, ask the shipper to contact your office. If HMR requires it, the shipper will put RO, or I'm sorry, RQ, comma, marine pollutant, comma, biohazard, comma, hot, or inhalation hazard on the package. Packages with liquid containers inside will also have package orientation markings with the arrows pointing in the correct upright direction. The labels always, uh, the labels used always reflect the hazard class of the product. If a package needs more than one label, the labels must be close together near the proper shipping. Near the proper shipping name. I'm gonna read that again. If a package needs more than one label, the labels must be close together near the proper shipping name. Nine point three point eight, recognizing hazardous materials. Learn to recognize shipments of hazmat. To find out if the shipment includes hazmat, look at the shipping paper. Does it have an entry with a proper shipping name, hazard class, or ID number? Does it have a highlighted entry or one with an X or RQ in the hazmat column? Other clues suggesting hazmat would include, what business is the shipper in? Are they a paint dealer, chemical supply, scientific supply house, pest control, or agricultural supplier? Explosives munitions or fireworks dealer? Are there tanks with diamond labels or placards on the premises? What type of package is being shipped? Cylinders and drums are often used for hazmat shipments. Is a hazard class label, proper shipping name, or ID number on the package? Are there any handling precautions? Nine point three point nine, hazardous waste manifest. When transporting hazardous wastes, you must sign by hand and carry a uniform hazardous waste manifest. The name and, the name and Environmental Protection Agency registration number of the shippers, carriers, and destination must appear on the manifest. Shippers must prepare, date, and sign by hand the manifest. Treat the manifest as a shipping paper when transporting the waste. Only give the waste shipment to another registered carrier or disposal slash treatment facility. Each carrier transporting the shipment must sign by hand the manifest. After you deliver the shipment, keep your copy of the manifest. Each copy must have all needed signatures and dates, including those of the person to whom you delivered the waste. Nine point three point ten, placarding. Attach the appropriate placards to the vehicle before you drive it. You are only allowed to move improperly placarded and improperly placarded vehicle during an emergency to protect life or property. Placards must appear on both sides and ends of the vehicle. The front placard may be on the front of the tractor or trailer. Each placard must be easily seen from the direction it faces. Each placard must be placed so the words or numbers are level and read from left to right. Each placard must be at least three inches away from any other markings. Each placard must be kept clear of attachments or devices such as ladders, doors, or tarpaulins. Each placard must be kept clean and undamaged so that the color, format, and message are easily seen. And finally, each placard must be affixed to a background of contrasting color. Note, the use of quote, "drive safely," unquote, and other slogans is prohibited. To decide which placards to use, you need to know, first, the hazard class of the materials, next, the amount of hazmat shipped, and the total weight of all classes of hazmat on your vehicle. Nine point three point eleven, placard tables. There are two placard tables, table one and table two. Table one materials must be placarded whenever any amount is transported. See figure nine point seven. Except for bulk packaging, the hazard classes in table two need placards only if the total amount transported is one thousand one pounds or more, including the package. Add the amounts from all shipping papers for the table two products you have on board. See figure nine point eight. You may use dangerous placards instead of separate placards for each table two hazard class when you have one thousand one pounds or more of two or more table two hazard classes requiring different placards and you have not loaded two thousand two hundred and five pounds or more of any table two hazard class material at any one place. You must use the specific placard for this material. The dangerous placard, quote unquote, is an option, not a requirement. You can always placard for the materials. If the words inhalation hazard are on the shipping paper or package, you must display poison gas or poison inhalation placards in addition to any other placards needed by the product's hazard class. The one thousand pound exception does not apply to these materials. Materials with a secondary hazard of dangerous when wet must display the dangerous when wet placard in addition to any other placards needed by the product's hazard class. I'm gonna read that again. Materials with a secondary hazard class of dangerous when wet must display the dangerous when wet, quote unquote, placard in addition to any other placards needed by the product's hazard class. The one thousand pound exception to placarding does not apply to these materials. Placards used to identify the primary or subsidiary hazard class of a material must have the hazard class or division number displayed in the lower corner of the placard. Permanently affixed subsidiary hazard placards without the hazard class number may be used as long as they stay within the color specifications. Placards may be displayed for hazmat even if not required so long as the placard identifies the hazard or the material being transported. Reading now from placard table one of two tables. Placard table one, any amount. If your vehicle contains any amount of one point one mass explosives, placard as explosives one point one. If your vehicle contains any amount of one point two project hazards, placard as explosives one point two. If your vehicle contains any amount of one point three mass fire hazards, placard as explosives one point three. If your vehicle contains any amount of two point three poisonous slash toxic gases, placard as poison gas. If your vehicle contains any amount of four point three dangerous when wet, placard as dangerous when wet. If your vehicle contains any amount of five point two organic peroxide type B, liquid or solid, temperature controlled, placard as organic peroxide. If your vehicle contains any amount of six point one inhalation hazard zone A and B only, placard as poison slash toxic inhalation. Finally, if your vehicle contains any amount of radioactive yellow, Roman numeral three, labeled, label only, placard as radioactive. Read it again. If your vehicle contains any amount of seven radioactive yellow, Roman numeral three, label only, placard as radioactive. Reading now from placard table number two, one thousand one pounds or more. Category of material, category of material, hazard class or division number and additional description as appropriate. The first is one point four, minor explosive, uh, minor explosion. Placard name is explosives one point four. Next is one point five, very insensitive. Placard name is explosives one point five. One point six, extremely insensitive. Placard name is explosives one point six. Two point one, flammable gases. Placard name is flammable gas. Two point two, non-flammable gases. Placard name is non-flammable gas. Three, flammable liquids. Placard name is flammable. Combustible liquid. Placard name is combustible. And there's a, an asterisk underneath it. It says, flammable may be used in place of a combustible on a cargo tank or portable tank. Four point one, flammable solids. Placard name is flammable solid. And these are all for one thousand one pounds or more. Four point two, spontaneously combustible. Placard name will be spontaneously combustible. Five point one, oxidizers. Placard name is oxidizer. Five point two, other than organic peroxide type B, liquid or solid, temperature controlled. Placard name will be organic peroxide. Six point one, other than inhalation hazard zone A or B. Placard name will be poison. Six point two, infectious substances. Under placard name, it says none. Eight, corrosives. Placard name will be corrosive. Nine, miscellaneous hazmat. Placard name will be class nine. And there's a note. Class nine placard is not required for domestic transportation. Finally is ORM dash D. Under category of material, ORM dash D. Placard name, there is none. Continuing with the reading. Bulk Packaging is a single container with a capacity greater than 119 gallons. A bulk package and a vehicle transporting a bulk package must be placarded even if it only has the residue of a hazmat. Certain bulk packages only have to be placarded on the two opposite sides or display labels. All other bulk packages must be placarded on all four sides. Coming to the end of this section. I'm coming to subsections 9.1, 9.2, and 9.3. Test your knowledge. Number 1, question number 1. Shipper's Package in Order to (fill in the blank) The Material. Shipper's Package in Order to What? The Material. Question number 2. Drivers placard their vehicle to (fill in the blank) The Risk. Communicate the Risk. Question number 3. What 3 things do you need to know to decide what placards, if any, you need? These are, I assume, test questions on the test. Question number 4. A hazmat ID number must appear on the (fill in the blank) and on the (fill in the blank). The ID number must also appear on cargo tanks and other bulk packaging. Question number 5. Where must you keep shipping papers describing hazmat? These questions may be on your test. If you cannot answer them all, reread subsections 9.1, 9.2, and 9.3. 9.4 Loading and Unloading. Do all you can to protect containers of hazmat. Do not use any tools which might damage containers or other packaging during loading. Do not use hooks. 9.4.1 General Loading Requirements. Before loading or unloading, set the parking brake. Make sure the vehicle will not move. Many products become more hazardous when exposed to heat. Load hazmat away from heat sources. Watch for signs of leaking or damaged containers. Leaks spell trouble. Do not transport leaking packages. Depending on the material, you, your truck, and others could be in danger. It is illegal to move a vehicle with leaking hazmat. Containers of hazmat must be braced to prevent movement of packages during transportation. No smoking. When loading or unloading hazmat, keep fire away. Do not let people smoke nearby. Never smoke around Class 1 Explosives, Class 2.1 Flammable Gas, Class 3 Flammable Liquids, Class 4 Flammable Solids, and Class 5, which are oxidizers. Secure Against Movement. Brace containers so they will not fall, slide, or bounce around during transportation. Be very careful when loading containers that have valves or other fittings. All hazmat packages must be secured during transportation. After loading, do not open any package during your trip. Never transfer hazmat from one package to another while in transit. You may empty a cargo tank, but do not empty any other package while it is on the vehicle. Cargo Heater Rules. There are special cargo heater rules for loading. Class 1 Explosives, Class 2.1 Flammable Gas, Class 3 Flammable Liquids. The rules usually forbid use of cargo heaters, including automatic cargo heater slash air conditioner units. Unless you have read all the related rules, do not load the above products in a cargo space that has a heater. Use Closed Cargo Space. You cannot have overhang or tailgate loads of Class 1 Explosives, Class 4 Flammable Solids, Class 5 Oxidizers. You must load these hazmat into a closed cargo space unless all packages are fire and water resistant, covered with a fire and water resistant tarp. That was the end of that. Covered with a fire and water resistant tarp. Precautions for Specific Hazards. Class 1 Explosives Materials. Turn your engine off before loading or unloading any explosives. Then, check the cargo space. You must disable cargo heaters, disconnect heater power sources, and drain heater fuel tanks. Make sure there are no sharp points that might damage cargo. Look for bolts, screws, nails, broken side panels, and broken floorboards. Use a floor lining with Division 1.1, 1.2, or 1.3 explosives. The floors must be tight, and the liner must be either non-metallic material or non-ferrous metal. Non-ferrous metals are any metal that does not contain iron or iron alloys. Use extra care to protect explosives. Never use hooks or other metal tools. Never drop, throw, or roll packages. Protect explosive packages from other cargo that might cause damage. Do not transfer a Division 1.1, 1.2, or 1.3 explosive from one vehicle to another on a public roadway except in an emergency. If safety requires an emergency transfer, set out red warning reflectors, flags, or electric lanterns. You must warn others on the road. Never transport damaged packages of explosives. Do not accept a package that shows any dampness or oily stain. Do not transport Division 1.1 or 1.2 explosives in vehicle combinations if there is a marked or placarded cargo tank in the combination. Next. Do not transport Division 1.1 or 1.2 explosives in vehicle combinations if the other vehicle in the combination contains Division 1.1-A Initiating Explosives, Packages of Class 7 Radioactive Materials labeled Yellow 3, Roman numeral 3, Division 2.3 Poisonous Gas, or Division 6.1 Poisonous Materials. And finally, do not transport Division 1.1 or 1.2 explosives in vehicle combinations if hazmat in a portable tank on a DOT spec, if hazmat in a portable tank on a DOT spec 106A or 110A tank. Class 4 Flammable Solids and Class 5 Oxidizers Materials. Class 4 materials are solids that react, including fire and explosion, to water, heat, and air, or even react spontaneously. Class 4 and 5 materials must be completely enclosed in a vehicle or covered securely. Class 4 and 5 materials, which become unstable and dangerous when wet, must be kept dry while in transit and during loading and unloading. Materials that are subject to spontaneous combustion or heating must be in vehicles with sufficient ventilation. Class 8 Corrosive Materials. If loading by hand, load breakable containers of corrosive liquid one by one. Keep them right side up. Do not drop or roll the containers. Load them onto an even floor surface. Stack carboys only if the lower tiers can bear the weight of the upper tiers safely. Do not load nitric acid above any other product. Load charged storage batteries so their liquid will not spill. Keep them right side up. Make sure other cargo will not fall against or short-circuit them. Never load corrosive liquids next to or above Division 1.4 Explosives C. Never load corrosive liquids next to or above Division 4.1 Flammable Solids. Never load corrosive liquids next to or above Division 4.3 Dangerous When Wet. Never load corrosive liquids next to or above Class 5 Oxidizers. Never load corrosive liquids next to or above Division 2.3 Zone B Poisonous Gases. Never load corrosive liquids with Division 1.1 or 1.2. Never load corrosive liquids with Division 1.2 or 1.3. Never load corrosive liquids with Division 1.5 Blasting Agents. Never load corrosive liquids with Division 2.3 Zone A Poisonous Gases. Never load corrosive liquids with Division 4.2 Spontaneously Combustible Materials. Never load corrosive liquids with Division 6.1 PG1 Zone A Poison Liquids. Moving on, Class 2 Compressed Gases Materials Including Cryogenic Liquids. If your vehicle does not have racks to hold cylinders, the cargo space floor must be flat. The cylinders must be held upright in racks attached to the vehicle or in boxes that will keep them from turning over. Cylinders may be loaded in a horizontal position, lying down, if it is designed so the relief valve is in the vapor space. Division 2.3 Poisonous Gas, or Division 6.1 Poisonous Materials. Never transport these materials in containers with interconnections. Never load a package labeled "Poison" or "Poison Inhalation Hazard" in the driver's cab or sleeper, or with any food material for human or animal consumption. There are special rules for loading and unloading Class 2 materials in cargo tanks. You must have special training to do this. Class 7 Radioactive Materials. Some packages of Class 7 Radioactive Materials bear a number called the Transport Index. The shipper labels these packages "Radioactive Roman numeral 2" or "Radioactive Roman numeral 3", and prints the package's Transport Index on the label. Radiation surrounds each package, passing through all nearby packages. To deal with this problem, the number of packages you can load together is controlled. Their closeness to people, animals, and unexposed film is also controlled. The Transport Index tells the degree of control needed during transportation. The new Transport Index of all packages is a single, in a single vehicle, must not exceed 50. Read it again. The total Transport Index of all packages in a single vehicle must not exceed 50. Table A in this section, CFR Title 49, 177.842, shows rules for each Transport Index. It shows how close you can load Class 7 Radioactive Materials to people, animals, or film. For example, you cannot leave a package with a Transport Index of 1.1 within 2 feet of people or cargo space walls. Mixed Loads. The rules require some products to be loaded separately. You cannot load them together in the same cargo space. Figure 9.9 lists some examples. The Regulations Segregation Table for Hazardous Materials Name other materials you must keep apart. I'm reading from Figure 9.9, the Do Not Load Table. Two columns, Do Not Load and In the Same Vehicle With. First column. Do not load Division 6.1 or 2.3 Poison or Poison Inhalation Hazard labeled Material in the same vehicle with animal or human food unless the poison package is overpacked in an approved way. Foodstuffs are anything you swallow. However, mouthwash, toothpaste, and skin creams are not foodstuff. Next line. End column. Do not load Division 2.3 Poisonous Gas Zone A or Division 6.1 Poison Liquids PG Roman numeral 1 Zone A in the same vehicle with Division 1.1, 1.2, 1.3 Explosives, Division 5.1 Oxidizers, Class 3 Flammable Liquids, Class 8 Corrosive Liquids, Division 5.2 Organic Peroxides, Division 1.2, 1.3 Read it again. Division 1.1, 1.2, 1.3 Explosives, Division 1.5 Blasting Agents, Division 2.1 Flammable Gases, and finally, Class 4 Flammable Solids. Do not load Charged Storage Batteries in the same vehicle with Division 1.1. Do not load Class 1 Detonating Primers in the same vehicle with any other explosives unless in authorized containers or packages. Do not load Division 6.1 Cyanides or Cyanide Mixtures in the same vehicle with acids, corrosive materials, or other acidic materials which could release hydrocyanic acid, for example, cyanides inorganic I don't know what NOS is. And finally, silver cyanide, sodium cyanide. I'm going to read that again. Do not load Division 6.1 Cyanides or Cyanide Mixtures in the same vehicle with acids, corrosive materials, or other acidic materials which could release hydrocyanic acid, for example, cyanides inorganic, NOS silver cyanide, sodium cyanide. Do not load nitric acid, Class 8, in the same vehicle with other materials unless the nitric acid is not loaded above any other material. Subsection 9.4 Test Your Knowledge. Question number 1. Around which hazard classes must you never smoke? Question number 2. Which 3 hazard classes should not be loaded into a trailer that has a heater slash air conditioner unit? Question 3. Should the floor liner required for Division 1.1 or 1.2 materials be stainless steel? Question number 4. At the shipper's dock, you are given a paper for 100 cartons of battery acid. You already have 100 pounds of dry silver cyanide onboard. What precautions do you have to take? Question number 5. Name a hazard class that uses Transport Indices to determine the amount that can be loaded in a single vehicle. These questions may be on your test. If you cannot answer them all, reread subsection 9.4.